Okay, we are live.
You don't call this director, right?
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay. I need a roll call. Let's just need a roll call.
Director Asner?
Here.
Director Fokker?
Here.
Director Goodman?
Here.
Director Patrow?
Here.
Vice President Brown?
Here.
President Cuneo?
Here.
You have a quorum. All right, we have today candidates for the sub-district board of education vacancy. And we have three candidates that will be interviewing tonight. With these three, what we will do is we will interview each roughly 10 minutes. Then we will have a general meeting and we'll come back and discuss the candidates. And I believe our first candidate is Ms. Tina Roach. Are you there ma'am?
I am here.
Thank you. Thank you for applying. We have questions to ask you. First of all, why are you interested in serving on the SSD Board of Education?
I worked for a special school district for 15 years and I loved being a part of the district, working with the students and the educators. And I felt at this time that this was a good fit for me to be involved and still be active with the students and getting more involved. Because I did have three of my own children that use special school district services.
Thank you. What skills would you bring to the board?
Well, the skills that I do have is the fact that I have had education for over 20 years before I retired. And the fact that I'm very capable of knowing what the teachers need and that I'm active in learning about, more about the different curriculums and getting involved.
Thank you. As a parent of a special needs child and as a previous employee, what do you think is the biggest challenge for SSD in the next three years?
In the next three years, especially with the circumstances that we have on hand, it's trying to get these students to, one, to feel comfortable and feel safe with what's going on. And to also get the district to get incorporated and to feeling more with the partner districts. And that's the big thing, is partner districts with the education staff that we have at SSD. Having everybody work together and being trained together to make the success of the students feel better.
Do you have any questions for us?
I would like to know kind of, I guess, more of the process of how this goes. I know that you said that you will interview three people and that you come back together after the fact.
Before, before we spoke with you tonight, before you entered in, every, all of the board here has had a chance to review your application, your answers to questions. And we then will take, you know, taking 10 minutes and we've done this for all three candidates. And then what will happen is after we have a business meeting after this meeting, we will then come back in a closed session to discuss the candidates. We will vote tonight on which of those candidates. And Amy, will we call the individual tonight or shall we, or will we call them tomorrow?
I thought we were going to call tonight.
We will call tonight at the end of the meeting to let everyone know our choice.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I do not have any other questions.
All righty, thank you ma'am.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our second candidate is Scott Mullen.
Yes.
Scott, are you there? Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Okay, great, welcome.
Hi, Mr. Mullen, welcome. Thank you for applying.
Hello, it's my pleasure.
Good evening. Mr. Mullen, my name's Dan Cuneo. I'm the current president of the board. And just to let you know before we get started, all the board members have had a tour review, your application, what you had sent us. And then today we'd just like to take 10 minutes to get a chance to get to know you.
Sounds great.
At the end, we will be interviewing three individuals tonight. And after we're done with the three individuals, we have to go into a business meeting. At the end of the business meeting, we will come in a closed session to discuss the candidates. Then before the end, then when we're finished discussing, we will take a vote. And then we will inform the candidate, all the candidates of what has happened. So by the end of the night, you will know.
Good, I'll miss any sleep then.
I'd like to, why are we starting off with, why are you interested in serving on the SSD board?
Well, I, over my teaching career at Parkway North and two years prior, I experienced working with SSD personnel. I, I hope you can, has been very, very strong and productive relationships and arrangement for me. Working with the most, the satisfaction comes with working with the students though. And I have co-taught a number of years. I pride myself in being connected with students of all backgrounds. So now at this stage of my life and career, I feel like I've got a fair amount of perspective. And I do see the district as being a tremendous force for good and support. And it would be a great honor to be associated with you all and to do my small part in helping to add to those goods.
Thank you. What skills would you bring to the board?
I think I've got a perhaps somewhat unique, not, I associate with a lot of highly, I consider much more intelligent people than myself. But I do think that I have some creative problem-solving skills. I think I have a big picture sense and I'm able to make, connect the dots in a way that I find it to be a kind of a practiced skill over the years. I think I'm able to take complex ideas and data points and so on to, and boil it down to something that's understandable and clear and relevant to my students. And I think I can bring some of that skill to the problem solving that you all face.
Thank you. What can SSD learn from the approach taken by the Excel Center that mirrors goodwill in regards to preparing students for employment?
Oh, very good. Well, I, don't ever give up. Don't ever give up. I think it was inspiring to see adults who were my elder there getting their high school equivalency, their diploma at the age of 60 and 70. It was amazing to meet those folks and to hear about their lives and to see, and I just really appreciated what they were doing to demonstrate to their families the value of an education and to aspire to grow. So it was, it was pretty profound to be associated with those students and staff. The staff is phenomenal there. The most upbeat and positive and you could just see the pride in their work. So it was, yeah, it was quite an experience.
Thank you. In your application, you referred to the salary negotiations and referenced, quote, "fair outcomes" SSD has provided. We'd be interested in your thoughts regarding the process and the outcome of our most recent negotiations. Your perceptions on the 7.8% request by SDN EA and our eventual resolution?
My perceptions of the, say that again, I didn't hear that very well.
Your perspective on 7.8% request by the SDN EA and our eventual resolution?
I would have to do a little more thinking on that, to be honest. I, and I did not, my homework coverage did not, I did not get thinking, into thinking about that as much. I do understand, I think from an educator's viewpoint, what it feels like to be supported, to have one's financial stability and security respected. I, I find that SSD staff, as well as gen ed educators, to be the most devoted and highly convicted staff and professionals that I've met. So I, I feel it, I'd be willing to give everyone a fair hearing on those requests. So I, I would, I'm into not only talking to folks to get anecdotal, but I would like to see comparisons with other compensation in other regional districts or in neighboring districts to draw up some comparisons and to see that we're treating our staff fairly.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
I've got lots of questions. I'm going to come in with, if I get invited, I will be very conscious that, you know, I've not been in the room with you discussing the biggest challenges. I imagine it's the, you know, the unprecedented times that we're in has created some immense challenges to you. So I would love to hear each of your thoughts on how you're, how you're tackling, how you're taking on those challenges. I know I have limited time right now. So I will, I guess I would ask, what do you all see as the greatest strengths of the district as well as areas for potential growth?
Thank you. All right. What do I see as our greatest growth? Greatest growth is making sure that we can provide and each of our students, let them succeed. In addition, we need to do this equitably. In other words, not equally, we need to be equitable. We need to provide for each student to the best extent so that they can succeed at the best level that they can. Something even more interesting right now is our COVID difficulties.
Right.
And the COVID difficulties have brought about additional challenges, not only with the safety of our kids and our staff, but also the fears of what happens when you don't teach. What are the fears of what happens and will our kids fall farther behind? So those are some of the challenges we're facing right now. I hope that kind of answered the question.
I'm sure that's just the tip of the iceberg on everything that you're trying to manage right now. So I understand that the challenges are immense.
All right, thank you. We, what we will, we will call you back. Like I said, we are going to go into a business meeting once we interview the third candidate. And then we will in turn give you a call back as to who was the candidate chosen. So we will give you a call back tonight.
Sounds great. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
The next candidate is Nancy A.
She's there.
Is everybody else out of the meeting?
Nancy, are you there? Nancy, are you there?
Yep.
Nancy, good evening. Can you hear me?
I don't know if she has her audio connected. Looks like she has her video active, not audio.
Nancy, can you hear me?
Can you give us a thumbs up if you can hear?
I'm not getting any. Wait, stop. I don't think Dan was ready for that. There we go. Where does?
Probably, I mean, we ran out. I just texted her and said, "I'm here."
Okay.
Yeah, I messaged her too.
Okay.
You could also call her, put her on speakerphone.
Yeah.
You want to try to call herself?
Call herself.
That's going to create a, so.
Well, Julie and, yeah, if we put it on the.
Yeah, because you have to be very good audio.
If we put the, the speaker.
Hey, everyone, we cannot hear you. Do you have your audio on, on? And on the left hand side, make sure you're not using. Yeah, but we can't hear you. So can you hear?
No.
I don't have an icon.
I wonder if her sound's off on her computer.
Do you want her, do you want to call her? My phone?
Hi.
No. Yeah, she set her audio, her video in.
Billy, where are you?
Yeah. Okay, can I, can you call this new number? Okay, it's 1-312-626-6799. 6799.
That's the interpreter's.
And then your meeting ID, the meeting ID and case ID are on.
And I'm going to.
Okay? All right, thanks.
Does she call another phone here? She's in the waiting room. All right. Okay. Nancy, are you there? Can you hear us? Huh? Wow.
Hello?
Hey, how are you?
There you are.
Hello.
Can you hear me? Okay. I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
So that's okay, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
What we're doing tonight, you are our third candidate. We're interviewing three individuals for the board tonight. This is Dan Cuneo speaking. When we're done here, we're going to ask you some questions. Everybody had a chance to look at your application, your Vida. And now, when there's some questions, they're here right on, like we can see right away.
Oh, good.
And we are interested in just some certain questions. At the end of this, we're going to go into the business meeting. At the end of the business meeting, what we're going to do is we will call the candidates and let them know the choice of the board.
Okay.
So we can let everybody know tonight, okay?
All right, that sounds good.
All right. First off, why are you interested in serving on the SSD board?
Well, as you all know, I retired from SSD in September after serving as chief communications officer for 21 years. So, and just thinking about what I wanted to do next professionally and personally, this opportunity just caught my attention as a way to continue a rewarding relationship with SSD. So there are a couple reasons why I decided to apply. But I think the most important one is that I'm really a strong advocate for public education. And I really care deeply about the students that SSD serves and the staff who work at SSD. And my grandson, and some of you know this already, has autism. And I'm also familiar with the challenges that families may face. So I think I have a, you know, personal interest as well as just in making sure that the district is headed in the right direction.
All right. What skills would you bring to the board?
Well, I think, as you all know, SSD is a complex organization and it's got the unique structure. And so there's a steep learning curve that goes along with that. And I think after working at SSD for so many years, I know the district inside and out. And I think my institutional knowledge would benefit the board and perhaps bring a different perspective even. So there's that. And then I also have a strong background and expertise in communications and public relations. So I think my written and verbal communication skills and organizational skills as well as expertise in media relations and crisis communications would be really beneficial. I also have the ability to look at pros and cons before making a decision and looking at the overall picture, I think, is really important.
Thank you. Given your tenure and depth of knowledge of SSD, what aside from COVID, nor COVID for the time being, are the top two issues facing the district today?
I, that's a tough one, but it's tough, it's tough to know what will happen in the next couple of years. But I think the one issue could be the ability to be able to hire enough staff. I think we know, you know, over the years, there are teacher shortages nationwide and especially in special education. And we also know that para vacancies are an issue. So I think being able to hire enough staff is one, enough qualified staff. Another issue that could, or not something that could be an issue are finances, I think, in the next few years. And, you know, with the economy the way it is now, it's even more important to be conservative in spending so that a tax levy increase doesn't become necessary in the next, you know, at least five years. So there are those things. And I also think, this is a common one, and this was before COVID, the health and wellness of students and staff, including mental health issues, I think are other issues that may come up.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
I really don't. I just, it would be a pleasure and an honor to serve on the Board of Education if you choose to do so. I would be happy to do that and really interested in the position.
Thank you. We will call you back later tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No, but I still have to do the pledge of allegiance. I think we probably need to.
Yeah, we need to adjourn.
But can someone move to adjourn?
No move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Got a computer gang here.
Doug?
You seem to be having trouble with signals right there today.
Oh, but, yeah, I can't get in the zoom.
I believe.
I, I second that you said.
It's the same.
Same line.
Yeah.
I'm just going to stay on.
Try to get that one.
Okay. Just the screen there. All righty. Like to call to other place, a roll call please.
Director Asner?
Here.
Director Fokker?
Here.
Director Goodman?
Here.
Director Patrow? Vice President Brown?
Here.
President Cuneo?
Here.
All right. I'd like to have the pledge of allegiance, please. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. There we go. All right, we have no public comments tonight. Would someone like to make a move to approve the agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Question.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Facility plan, five-year facility plan. Go to the superintendent's room. All yours.
Thank you. Good evening, President Cuneo, Vice President Brown, Board of Education, and Dr. Keenan. My name is Jeff Hogg and I'm the operating officer. With me tonight is Toby Claudefelter and he's the Director of Facilities and Maintenance. This evening, we will be discussing and presenting the five-year facility plan. Next slide, Mark, thank you. So as you can see, the facilities department is made up of one director, two managers, 17 maintenance staff, and the breakdown of that maintenance staff, four specialists, three generalists, and 10 skilled craftsmen. We have one maintenance building, seven schools, and 22 total SSD school buildings, or SSD buildings. The facilities department responsibility is all maintenance, all infrastructure, and all HVAC. Our maintenance and facilities department supervises custodial. They work with hazardous materials. They're responsible for all grounds, snow removal, and current and future construction projects. Some more numbers for you. The facilities department is responsible for over 1.2 million total square feet of school and working space, responsible for 186 acres of grounds, and responsible for all roofs, parking lots, landscaping, basically anything else that grows and anything else that can break, they are in charge of. The immediate goals, continue to engage staff in professional development, develop a preventative maintenance plan, and continually monitor campus for safety and security issues. So let's jump right into the five-year document plan. First major project on the docket for year one is wrapping up. North Tech received a 4,000 square foot office renovation. They received a new secure vestibule and entryway and a major front elevation upgrade. If you have not had a chance to drive by the school and see this, you should. It's absolutely beautiful and the staff there is excited for it. The total cost of the project was $3.2 million. There's some pictures coming up and Toby's going to walk you through what you're looking at on the screen.
First picture is North Tech as it was. It's changed radically in the last six months. If you go to the next one, you kind of see how the elevation, front elevation changed. The new canopy is approximately 30 feet longer and about four foot wider than the old canopy, so it better covers the students. And also, on the next slide, you'll see it's, it'll, it's going to stagger up. There's got to be a better way of saying it. Stair step up from the canopy to a two, almost a two-story interior foyer that's going to be the security vestibule that has some safety features, which I can get into if you'd like. And it's going to be a beautiful front entrance. It also distinguishes the two entrances into one focal point where you'll have a single point of entry for safety for the students. On the interior, the first picture you see there is looking into the new hallway for the nursing area. The second one is student services where they'll have a place to set up with their computers and meet with counselors and so forth. It's stunning, it's stunning colors, it's just turned out beautiful. The next picture is a ramp that was built between North Tech and Ackerman to bring the kids from Ackerman for safety reasons and also down to the field, the soccer field behind North Tech. It is further along in that picture. The handrails aren't in yet, but the sod is in and it looks beautiful.
And so then we move on to year two of the plan. In year two renovations similar to those at North Tech will begin at South Tech. South Tech will receive an upgrade to the front elevation and an office space renovation as well. Again, with security at the forefront of what we're doing now with our construction projects, South Tech will also receive a secure vestibule and entry. And this will identify a main entryway for patrons, for visitors, for students in the South Tech. As you know, right now, sometimes it's a little confusing with the overhang and with cosmetic entry. When we put this in, this will identify a clear entry into that building. Along with the work to the front, South Tech will also receive a new student entry, a new bus lane, and new parking in the back of the building. This will help with two things. This will help with a little more additional parking, but it'll ease the flow of traffic. It'll help with student pickup and drop off as those times. So the estimated cost of this project is between $5 to $6 million. And that work is scheduled to begin this spring.
And the pictures are pretty self-explanatory. This is the front bus canopy and a shot of the, actually the Cosmo entrance, which is going to be done away with because we're going to focus on just the main front entrance.
And then the other major project at South Tech this year is our Bridges program. Our Bridges program is currently housed inside of South Tech. It's four classrooms and a small office. They're outgrowing that. And so we need to provide a space for that program in and of itself. And so the second major project will be to move our Bridges program from inside of South Tech to the Trades Building, which is behind it. Currently, the Trades Building houses electrical and masonry trades. We're going to move that through some planning with the building principal there. We're going to move that back into the main building. And then, once we've done that, we're going to do a 16,000 square foot renovation project, which will allow us to add five classrooms, a new office, a multipurpose room, a kitchen. We're also going to paint the outside of the building and create an outside space for our Bridges students. This will give them an area and educational setting that they can really be proud of.
This is the current plan as it is right now. It could change a little bit, but so far, this has been reviewed and it looks like it's going to move forward.
And so as you see the green there, those are all classroom additions. The orange in the middle is a multipurpose room. The purple up top is a student cafeteria. We have other numerous offices that provides more space. What this really does is spread this program out and allows the students, allow the students, plus we're going to put a new entry here. And so what that's going to do is just give this program a newfound pride in what they do.
In addition, it's going to be a safer building because the front entrance is now on the bus lane area. We're flipping the building and have the front entrance on the back because cars and buses fly down that road faster than they should.
So this will be a really good opportunity for the program. Go ahead, next slide, Mark, please. And this just kind of shows you what the elevation looks like. It's the building in the back that has the two angled brick walls. And so we are going to renovate the inside of that, some of the outside, and really make it a nice building for them. All right. So in year three of the plan, as you'll see in the next couple of slides, we're already in the planning phase for renovation, but we're going to talk year three for central office. When we get to this point, the renovation of central office will be the last building renovated in the district. This building was constructed in 1973 and renovated in the late 90s. And what this will entail is it will, the renovation is going to put a new main entry and we'll show you what that could look like. It'll be a complete remodel of the inside, both upstairs and downstairs. We'll have technology upgrades, security improvement, HVAC, and electrical upgrades. With the scope of this project, one, one thing we will have to do is we will have to relocate the staff from central office for a year. Right now, we're doing some studies and we think we could relocate the staff from central office either out to partner districts or to the learning center. If for some reason that wouldn't work, we're also possibly looking into renting some space. But right now, we think we can do that in-house. Back in the 90s, when they renovated this the last time, we did some historical digging and asked how staff was handled then. And the numbers of staff weren't nearly as large here, and so they were able to move them around the construction at that time, whether it was upstairs or downstairs. We're just, we're too big right now and the scope of the project won't allow us to do that. So, we're looking into some alternatives. This project, like I said, will be a year long once we, once we get it going, and it'll cost approximately $8 million.
That does not include relocating?
No, but if we do it in-house, there won't be a cost with that. So then I'll have Toby walk you through here a couple of pictures.
Well, there's, I mean, that's pretty self-explanatory. That's the lower level entrance and it looks like we're going to do a major facelift on the side away from Clayton Road because town and country is kind of opposed any structural or elevation changes on the front, but really that's where we need to focus our energy anyway. So, you'll see on the next page, the lower entrance is going to be bumped out. It'll possibly, you know, have a staircase on the inside tying the floors together of the new elevator. I mean, just a general remodel throughout the building is going to be stunning. And we're also trying to bring a lot of light into it with either skylights or more glass right now, so you don't feel like you're in a cave.
So that would become the primary entrance then?
That's correct.
Well, there's, there's two options we're talking through. We have a meeting a little bit tomorrow to talk about it. One is that entry on the bottom level, so over here where we come in. The other would be to change the entry that's up here on the side of the building, minimize that. And then, if you could go to the next slide, please, and then one more. We would be, instead of here, where we were going to put the entry, we would move it to up here and have a first floor entrance up to where we're talking about moving the offices and different areas like that. So, we're in the project's planning stage of either deciding whether we want to have the entrance up here into the first floor or down here into the, or the bottom floor.
And I think it makes some sense to have an entrance visible from the street, don't you think?
I would think so.
Is it going to have a danger of running back?
And with the architects, they decided that, or they talked about this in the flow of the, the flow of the parking lot brings them around, and in essence, this becomes the front of the building. We probably wouldn't get to do anything to the Clayton Road side of the building because of zoning and all that. So, while we bring them around this way and then they're, basically they're coming in and this, in essence, becomes the front of the building even though it's not on the street.
What about parking? And how, if you change the front, are you going to lose much parking?
No, it would be minimal. The only area where it would be, would be in here with some redistribution of land for water management, but really, in essence, we're not going to lose, parking will be an issue.
Don't need to lose parking here. Parking is a disaster.
Yep. And that's, that is something that the architects have taken into consideration. Okay. All right. And then Plan Year Four. As we discussed, our current central garage lease ends the summer of 2024. We're in the process now of identifying possibilities for maybe purchasing land and building a new central garage. That land needs to be identified soon so that we can continue the planning phase and have a new structure built if that's the way we decide to go by the time the lease is up in May of 2024. So with land and demolition, zoning, and building, we're looking at a project cost of $4 to $6 million. And then also new windows throughout North and South Tech at an approximate cost of $600 per building. This will not only increase the efficiency, but it'll upgrade the rest and the look of the buildings throughout. All right, next slide, Mark. And then Year Five, there are no major construction projects, and this is a good thing. It allows us to, if we need to expand our projects that we have planned out a year, if we would have to, if not, it allows us to play catch-up for a year. And we'll continue doing bigger projects in the district, one of them being doors at North Tech and South Tech, constantly working on the HVAC district-wide, various roofing projects, two, two schools that are slated for some front hall remodels, new owner in Southview, and then upgrade the lighting in the district LED, which will help with efficiency in our electricals. So.
So on these capital expenses, can, can these be reflected in our fund balance each time?
Yes, that can be, in the way that we project it, yes, that will, that will help. We can also move money from Fund One to Fund Four if we need to.
I just don't want to see a 72% fund balance.
Correct. And so then, one more slide, please, Mark. And then just ongoing projects, and they're always ongoing. Concrete and asphalt replacement, continued shop remodels for the tech schools, continued fencing upgrades, continued renovate bathrooms district-wide, and then digitize all blueprints. And then this next slide is one of my favorites. This picture is, it's not stock footage, this, these are our guys, this is our facilities department. One of their meetings early on was to paint on one of the parking lots. We love our SSD kids. Back the vans up. Jeff Sherrill took the drone straight up and took this picture. It goes right along with the goal, and that's the overall goal of the facilities department, is to ensure safe and efficient facilities, buildings, and grounds that allow our staff to provide an excellent or an exceptional learning experience for our students. And the feedback we get, and when you work with these guys every day, that's what they live, and they really are here for our kids. So, that completes the five-year facilities plan. I'd be more than happy, or Toby, more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any word?
Yes, so aside from the large projects, obviously the big buildings, the facilities in the schools, what do we tend to spend year to year on these types of projects?
Asphalt replacement is always a big one. Roofing, we, we literally have a schedule of roof, a new roof every year, and by the time we're done, we'll be starting again at the other end. Bathroom remodels, hallway remodels, flooring replacement, LED lighting. We've been trending down on our energy costs because of the new windows at Southview, new owner, LED lighting throughout the district, so we're trending down on the energy cost right now.
And what have we tended to spend over the years on average?
We budget, we budget anywhere between $9 to $12 million for the facility projects. Yes.
I'd be careful not to call the central office stunning. I don't think we want to put that much money, quite honestly, in our administrative facilities. That's my personal opinion.
I have a question. How many students do you, you would not know, Dr. Keenan you would know, or Wendy you would know? How many students do we have at Bridges?
Twenty, twenty to, twenty to thirty. Sometimes we get up to forty.
I know we look at that program, I know that we think that's outrageously expensive, but that's a good program that we need to keep. I know we've had those students come in before.
Yeah, and I, to be very honest, right now, it's not a good location. It's not very welcoming for kids. It's behind a chain link fence you have to walk around at the side entrance. And then, the other thing, when you go in there right now, it's a very small room for the amount of kids. When we talk about that many kids, it's, it's very small. And these, the kids actually do deserve more of an educational environment to be supported.
I was just looking at 30 kids, 16,000 square feet. That's one-third the size of this entire building. At 2.5, now that's a lot of money.
Yeah, but I also think these kids have been, and they went, you went to strip mall.
So we're in a, yeah, I can't.
Only have had the scraps of what has been provided.
You have to understand, I have a personal bias, I can't take a program that deserves it, but they, they need a space, they need a classroom that can support the space and movement of the students. I think this is a long time coming. And it needs to be permanent, instead of permanent from year to year.
Something needs to be permanent in these kids' life. I remember, and the kids come in, we were the only permanent thing they had.
Yes, sir.
Yep. So I think, yeah, I mean, I know cost-wise, but it's just, it's been one of those programs that is, because it's not very big, it's one of those things, like, we'll, we'll put it in these little makeshift places and it, it doesn't feel good for the kids.
Wendy, how many, I'm sorry, how many of these kids stay in North County for Bridges Services?
We have a handful. It depends on where the location of Bridges is, that's the norm of what students we pull from. Typically, we have students that participate in. Typically, we have students that participate in a Bridges program that would be at Northview that is a typical instructional process. When the kids need more intrinsic interventions, more intensive interventions, turns out that's when they go to Bridges. So we have a handful of kids.
Bridges.
What's nice about this program also is Bridges is getting a large middle school population and continues to build in a middle school population. What this would allow to is have middle school on one side and high school on the other and let them operate simultaneously.
Okay, so kids don't stay at Bridges, uh, North County through their time. Once they need more services, they come?
Yes.
Or there's some that graduate from the north?
There is, there is a variety of both, yes. Kids that might need a little bit more intensive services may, we may send them to Bridges based on the supports that they need, it's a smaller environment, less students and less traffic. But we do have students that stay at Northview at Ackerman for that fact, that continue on in our student graduation.
So it's not 25 to 30 at South Tech then, that would sound like, right?
Oh, no, at, at, at South Tech, Bridges now, they have, I think, thirty-six, are you correct? Thirty-six students.
Thinking up to about fifty kids going through.
Yes.
All I'm saying, Wendy, is that it seems like every two, three years, we have this discussion, should we keep Bridges? And all, and I'm saying that if we're going to spend 2.5 million in renovate a building, maybe we need to put that discussion away and finally say we're going to keep it.
Yeah, I absolutely would say that. Yes, sir.
Because it seems that every two, three years, we get the cost, the cost per kid, the cost is there, and I'm not saying don't, but I'm just saying, if we're going to park out 2.5 million dollars, that's an investment. That means maybe for at least a while, we should not talk about closing this program or, or bringing it back for review to possible keep it going.
I've experienced a personal success with that program, so I would say yes.
And where, how should we educate those kids?
No.
You would have to, if you sent them to purchase the service, you're going to be spending well more than what we're putting into this one-time event, investment, and it's going to be year over year.
We, we would, when we review this program, always the question comes up, do we keep it because of the cost? Because it's, it's, and...
It is.
Saying, I, I agree to keep it, but I'm just saying if we're parking out 2.5 million, renovating a trade place where we have something else and doing this, maybe that should not be a question every two, three years.
That was Bronn. Did you have a question? Thank you, Bronn.
I, I did, thank you. Uh, more of a comment. I, I was curious, Dr. Keenan, will we be able to extend Bridges potentially with this additional space to service more students? Because I agree, it's a, it's an incredible program, and being in those rooms, it does not feel like an educational environment. It feels like a detention center. So I think it's important, if, for those of you that, that need to see it, if you haven't had the opportunity yet, you definitely should, but I know if my child was in that environment, I would be very grateful and very excited about the renovation. These kids deserve it, and they have had, I think, you know, among the toughest stories of, of any kids I had the opportunity to meet when I was visiting each of the centers, so just something to take into consideration.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keenan, we have another report?
We do. We have the Professional Development Committee, and now we have Dr. Bolton and Mrs. MacShay for your Professional Learning.
Good evening, President Cuneo, Vice President Brown, Directors, Dr. Keenan. My name is Molly Bolton. I am the Executive Director of Teaching Learning and Accountability. With me tonight, I also have Tina MacShay, who is the Director of Professional Learning. We are here today to present the Professional Development Committee Professional Development Plan and Budget. So the purpose of this presentation is to inform you of the Professional Development Committee's Professional Development Plan and Budget for the 2020 school year. According to DESI's guidelines, the responsibilities of the Board of Education are to approve the District Professional Development Plan, ensure the implementation of the plan is to meet student as well as adult learning needs, and to ensure that our new teachers receive their ongoing high-quality BTAH, or Beginning Teacher Assistance Program, and mentoring programs that are aligned to those state standards and guidelines. So just an overview of what the Professional Development Committee does. So they work in partnership with building leaders as well as the local school board, and they utilize standards for professional learning to, to guide their efforts of not only individuals, but teams and schools and the district in setting policy, organizing, and providing, facilitating, managing, participating in, and monitoring and measuring the effectiveness of our professional learning to increase educator effectiveness and results for all students. And that comes from DESI's definition. Committee members are selected by their peers in each of our partner districts as well as our low incident providers such as Devon Harder Hearing, Vision, and those other divisions like that, and technical education as well as early childhood. So there is a new regulation that was just passed the past school year that does limit these funds to be spent on certified teaching staff. In the past, we were able to support our speech-language pathologist as well, but DESI has changed the requirement that these funds must be spent on certified teachers. Next slide. So where do the funds come from? School districts are mandated to allocate 1% of their revenue that's from the foundation program to the Professional Development Committee for professional development. And of the monies that are allocated, 75% of those monies have to be spent within the same physical year. So this report that we're presenting to you tonight will become an artifact that we, that we have reviewed and that the Board has approved the plan and of how the funds would be dispersed. Director Goodman had asked in a question previously what the budget looked like in past years and those goal areas. So the goal areas were labeled a little bit differently in the past, but you can see the big buckets, if you will, are still the same. So student performance, where if you look at other years, that would be literacy, numeracy, social, emotional, as well as our non-crisis intervention, those sorts of things. Teacher induction and teacher leadership, as well as funding for the actual committee itself. And we'll talk a little bit more about that when we actually get into the goals. So I'm going to turn it over to Tina to talk a little bit about the goal and the plan.
Good evening, President Cuneo, Vice President Brown, Board of Directors, and Dr. Keenan. As Molly indicated, I'll share with you a little bit about the three goals that we've established for our Professional Development Committee for this year and talk about a little, a little bit about the funded activities that are associated with each of those goals and how we'll measure them. So this first goal here is all about our students, so alignment to our comprehensive school improvement plan, first and foremost, is this Goal One, which looks at improving student performance in the area of literacy, numeracy, and behavior through the professional learning that is provided to our teachers so that they have increasing knowledge and, and support for implementation of high-leverage practices that are research-based. We'll do some measurements along the way for each of the funded activities using pre-post data. Some of the funded activities for this year, you'll see listed below with some of those itemized expenses in, in the handout that you, that's posted. So letters and numbers, we are piloting that this year with a group of 40 teachers, so letters being the, the professional learning in the area of literacy and numbers being in the area of numeracy. Wilson and the strategic instructional model, or SEM, is also another area that supports literacy. Fast bridge licenses as one of our measurement tools is also a PDC allowable expense. Focus math, corrective math, address those areas of numeracy. And then you see a, a funded activity with our non-violent crisis prevention and intervention. We also support the career technical education conference requests, such as the New Teacher Institute is one kind of annual item. And then the Professional Development Committee actually invites folks to make requests to the Professional Development Committee, and through an approval process that the committee uses, we may fund those activities as well. And those would be in alignment to these three areas and in alignment with the tiered intervention models for each of the districts. Our second goal that is in alignment with, as Molly described in the purpose, is to provide an intensive induction program for our new teachers. And so that would include supporting materials for their orientation as well as a core curriculum for those teachers in their first years with the district. That core curriculum includes explicit instruction, special education process, non-violent crisis and intervention training, our classroom learning systems curriculum as well. And then also a large component of this goal is used to support new teachers through our school-level mentors. Our third goal is to ensure that we do have a, an effective functioning committee, and so that committee meets regularly. So far this year, they have went through an orientation that helps them understand the processes and procedures of the committee, and then they really serve as that liaison between administrators and teachers to help identify what are the needs and how we can best use those funds accordingly to help support teachers' skill sets in order to improve student performance. Here at a glance are how those expenses, given our total of anticipated title, uh, funds this year will be $450,000. We have $330,000 earmarked to go towards Goal One and student performance. We have an additional $113,000, a bit more than that, for our teacher induction program, and then to fund the Professional Development Committee itself a little more than $4,000. I'm sorry, $6,000, $6,500 this year. So we'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Questions, anyone? One chance.
So I'm glad to see the focus that we're doing against students, both in their performance and the teacher programs. I mean, that's different in the past, and I think that's really great. But I'm understanding this is this year that already began last July 1, right? So a little late. Have we been spending money in this budget that we haven't approved yet, or?
So the budget was actually approved with the budget cycle.
Should we be seeing something like this?
So it's the plan, yeah.
Earlier in the year?
Yes, we should.
I thought that.
Um, and...
We go forward to see next year's?
We will see next year's. When we bring the budget to the Board, we will have the plan to go along with the budget. So when you're looking at approving a budget, you will have the plan.
Yeah. Typically, this is how they, how we've done it, you know, and Molly being in the role now, we've talked about helping this to align with the budget and people.
So it'll be exactly more concrete than committees already, as we've talked about initial kind of budgeting process, working on what that could potentially... Yeah.
I do like the new focus on, it seems to be much more focused on what we're doing as opposed to more scattered than what we've done.
Very, our attention is very focused with clear measures.
I have a question, unless somebody else does on Goal One, and it's on the non-violent crisis prevention and intervention, NCPI. How are we measuring that?
We measured it a couple of different ways through our previous DC goals and with strategy, Molly, I'll tell you, strategy 1.3.
Used to be the behavior goal, now that intertwined with 1.1.
I was going to recommend a measurement that you might want to use on that.
Absolutely.
I'd like, could you measure that also by your workman's comp on the measure of staff-related entries?
Absolutely, that would be a great measure.
I'd, I'd like that measured two ways. If you could, tell me if it's effective. One, which is on the monetary shots on it and on the numbers on it. How many staff get hurt? I'm guessing from reviewing the settlements, we, we have a lot of staff, some staff, some others. I would say the vast majority of our staff are hurt in student-related matters, at least the service entries. And so that, that would be a good measurement to see if we have that, we can tie that back to the workman's comp.
Yep.
Another question?
Great, thank you.
Do you have a... Right along. May I have a approval of a consensual items, please? Someone make a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Asner. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. It's too far away from me. And they're telling me I'm not old enough to get to that. The, uh... All right, would someone like to make a motion? Wait, do we? The consensus item was already the Board Policy, GBB, CP?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I'll see. All righty, action items. Can we move that up a little bit, please, for me? There we go. Yeah, next, I need a, would someone like to make a motion to close meeting of the Board of Education on January 12, 2021?
Second.
Need a roll call on this one.
Director Asner?
Yes.
Director Faulkner?
Yes.
Director Goodman?
Yes.
Director Patra?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
And President Cuneo?
Yes. Would someone like to make a, approval of our past meeting's minutes, please?
I'll move approval of the October 20th executive meeting and special meeting minutes, as well as the October 27th executive assistance meeting minutes.
Second on that. Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In tonight's executive meeting, the following items were approved: employment, resignations, retirement, salary adjustments, extra duty pay, and one settlement. Board communications. Anyone have anything they would like to say? Everyone stay healthy, and we'll see you next week, because we have another board meeting. Be trying to get as many in as we can in the same...
We can't, but...
Yes. Yeah, it's, otherwise, I mean, what happens in this month, you know? Okay, please, everybody can take a look at the calendar for events. What I would like to do is adjourn, then we were going to go into a closed session again, please. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, everybody else, please go home.